So we will go ahead and proceed. I'm looking for a motion of approval for the agenda as presented. I saw move. Moved by Deb, second by Wes. We are ready for the question. I didn't see anything. Diane, would you be willing to state the school district mission statement?
The Brookings School District prepares all learners to be confident, engaged citizens, empowered to impact the ever-changing and interconnected world.
Next up, this is a time for board members and administration to identify any items on the agenda that could be considered a conflict of interest. Do we have any waivers to present?
We have none this evening.
All right, next up, this is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the board concerning issues that are not on the agenda. Per our policy, presentations should be five minutes. We will have a timer set for all those speaking tonight to make sure that everybody has allocated their five minutes. And I would also just remind everybody that we are live streaming. Because of that, we need to be very cautious of the language we're using, as well as ensuring that we're not speaking out about any personnel matters or any student matters as they are minors. Okay, so with that. Andrew McCain. I'm sorry if I butchered your name. Yep, you'll want to come up to the table and you'll push the light when you see a green light showing, then it's on. And it needs to be pretty close to your face for the online viewers to be able to hear you.
All right, I'll try and stumble through this here. My name is Andrew McCain. Like you had mentioned, most folks here watching probably don't know me. A couple individuals here, I was neighbor to recently and actually part of a parent-teacher committee with another member here. But as COVID has swung through things, I know you guys have heard so much on either side of COVID, you're probably sick and tired of it. As a nurse, I'm pretty sick and tired of dealing with it as well. And as a father of two children, have lots of concerns myself. I don't know if this is the time, I know it may or may not be on the agenda, but I just wanted to once again bring up mask mandates, the possibility of. I've noticed lots of inaction as far as COVID goes. When I review what has been done, what's been stated will be done. And as things are ever-evolving, spread just continues to grow and grow, especially within the community. As a nurse for a large healthcare system in South Dakota, I have been able to take care of COVID patients and non-COVID patients alike. We're running out of beds for both currently, not just in Brookings, but at any hospital that Brookings sends their patients to, because as we all know, they're not really qualified to handle too much. That being said, I've taken care of patients from Brookings despite not working at Brookings, just living here. I've gotten to know mothers, grandmothers of children, you know, who brought COVID into the house, immunocompromised parents and family members who unfortunately didn't have a say in what was happening in their children's lives and in the community. It was through no fault of their own. They were taking all precautions and doing everything that they could. It was unfortunately because of the inaction of those around them. In the Brookings School District open memo dated August 24th, 2021, it states, "Our reactions and interactions will frame how our children will react and interact when faced with challenges as adults." And in the most recent district core values I could find, it included "safe and secure environment," as well as "integrity and transparency throughout the organization." Goes on to say, "These are values that will serve to guide students, staff, administration, and board education decisions and actions." Thus far from the Brookings School District, I've seen a lot of inaction and worse indifference. I'm pretty nervous, if you guys can't tell, so I thought I'd show up a little bit early. It was almost more disheartening to hear some of the war stories about some of the individuals here who have recently had COVID. And it's just unfortunate that it came off with such a connotation, I thought. Brookings has always really felt like a community to me, from the time I was in college to coming back to raise a family. I took pride in its inclusion and the care for neighbors. Not enacting a mask mandate in public schools when community spread is as high as it is and students are actively testing positive is exactly how you sicken a community. Spread's going to continue whether you guys do anything or not further than you already have, but it's certainly going to spiral faster as children continue to take it home to family members or grandparents who, you know, are already taking all precautions and only maybe visiting with people in their pod. The only recognizable action that I could find taken from Phase 1 to Phase 2, you know, aside from strong language of encouragement and, you know, advising, was cleaning practices and high-touch surfaces. Unfortunately, transmission from fomite contact or surfaces and inanimate objects has always been the lowest-risk spread of COVID-19. The highest-risk spread continues to be from respiratory droplets. The easiest way to combat that would just be having individuals wear masks. By not taking action and requiring masks in one of the few corners of the community that you guys can protect, I feel like you're choosing to sicken the rest of the community. So, all ahead. Thank you.
Matt Olson.
Have to hold it or just push it?
If it's green and lit up, okay.
Matt Olson, I don't think I have to tell you what I think of masks. I've been here in the past. I just really wish that we would, you know, say you want to follow the science. So if you want to follow the science, then you're looking at a couple microns, even if it's on a, even if it's on a dro. I'm sorry, did I?
Yep.
I apologize. I'll try and stay close. Um, I won't hug it, but I'll get close. So you're looking at a virus, even if it's on a droplet, that's, you know, a couple microns. You're looking at most masks, some are better than others, but if you're looking, you know, in here, cloth masks, you're looking at 20, 30 micron spaces between them. Doing it. Then let's get to the Omicron virus, okay? Crazy infectious. My wife, I don't think you're familiar with who that is, she's like, "Everyone's gonna get it. Everyone's gonna get it. Faster we get it, the better, then everyone's immune." You know, there's gonna be, always gonna be people that are gonna get more sick, that's just how viruses work. Yeah, so I appreciate not wearing masks. And this inaction, I keep, I keep, you know, you read the paper and stuff, "Well, you're not a good neighbor if you don't do this and don't do that." I'm a good neighbor and I don't do that stuff, so, anyway. Yeah, I appreciate really no action. I think the smart thing would be just to let people get it, to take care of the people that get sick. If there's people that are, that are, have comorbidities or whatever, those are the people you protect. And if you know anything, children don't need to be protected. They have a, they didn't need to be protected from the last virus. This virus is even less deadly, so, anyway, thank you very much.
Tony Lanning.
Hi there, I'm here to talk again about this. I am at the point now where, once again, I want to say we do need to do something. It's disheartening to come to school every day as a longtime teacher in this school district and see more of my colleagues and more of my students not at school when we can do something about this. Whether it gets to the point that it's severe or not, it doesn't matter, it's an illness and it spreads very rapidly. Even to school today, three more of my colleagues are out, tested positive. I see kids out every single day. And for a teacher, you want your, you want your child's teacher to be prepared to deal with so much when your children come to school. It's hard to deal with this right now. It's hard to plan, not knowing if you're gonna have eight kids out, 10 kids out, five kids out. You know, I talked to my colleagues and lesson planning is a nightmare right now. You know, the lesson planning that we're doing is making arrangements to send stuff home for kids. The lesson planning we're doing now is, when do these kids come back? Who's supposed to be wearing a mask for five days? Who is just exposed? Who has it? Something is better than nothing. I guess I don't understand with the inaction, what the plus point is. What is it that we hope to achieve by not doing anything? So, yes, I think whether it be a cloth mask, whether it be an N95, whether it be just the portable or the disposable surgical mask, we have them around. We can do something about it. I think, you know, just like anything else, the more that we take care of it, the better it'll be for all of us. I think we're past the point where we can't do anything.
Thank you. Blake Huska.
Hi, so I'm Blake Huska and I'm a student at the Brookings School District, attending VHS. I've been disappointed to see the lack of concrete solution to slow and the Omicron variant. I think the students and staff's safety is the top priority and should be for people in positions of power in the district. As with any threat, there are recommended guidelines to follow with each other's safety. There's an impending tornado, there are guidelines to seek shelter, whether people want to have their heads covered kneeling in the corner or not. Masks have been repeatedly proven to work and everything, and in the end, everything boils down to the staff, student, and community safety. Both protecting yourself in a tornado and wearing a mask can be uncomfortable. Someone wouldn't say they don't want to shut the door and turn the lights off to kneel in a classroom because of political bias, though. Safety shouldn't be political, and I think most people would rather be inconvenienced by sitting in a darkened room on the floor for a few minutes rather than hurt in a storm and wind up much further inconvenienced in a hospital bed. Not much, not to mention leaving the lights on in a tornado would further pose a risk to every other student in the room. I just, and wouldn't just affect the single person who left them on. While this is just an analogy, the principles of this can be applied to the safety protocols taken in the Phase 3 plan. While we may be minorly inconvenienced for a period of time with masks and distancing, I think many would rather pay it safe so they can continue to come to school with certainty that they won't end up sick. South Dakota has seen its first death in a child under the age of 10, which is the age range of many elementary students. And as the older brother in my family, it bothers me to think of how little the school has done for my own safety, but it pains me to think of how many little siblings are risking their health just so they can receive their education. This in mind, I think the elements of the Phase 3 plan, especially the mask mandate, would greatly benefit the staff and students.
Thank you. Trisha. Aaron? Aaron, sorry.
Uh, so, can I start now or?
Yeah, go ahead.
I am Trisha, a junior at Brookings High School, and I am here again to bring forth the issue of the Omicron variant and the spread that it's causing our schools. As a student, I believe that the school district has not been doing enough to combat the threat that the pandemic holds. The state of South Dakota has had 34,000 active cases, 1,600 of which are in Brookings County alone, and that makes us have high community spread. And in the face of this surge, I feel that the school's struggling. We have all-time high case numbers, many students have tested positive, and they've been sending their peers into quarantine and exposing them to the disease. Even teachers are getting exposed at higher rates and the school must scramble to get substitutes last minute. There's also many people sick who aren't even getting tested, so the case numbers and community spread are probably lower than the actual spread of the disease. On top of all this, the vaccine's only 70% effective at combating the Omicron variant, so even those who have gotten vaccinated aren't fully safe. And in the face of all this, I feel that the school hasn't done enough that it should have done. We've moved to Phase 2, but I feel that that doesn't actually mean much change. It just includes strongly suggested guidelines, and these are guidelines that people aren't always likely to follow. If we want the situation to get better, the school needs to do more about it. I think we should move to Phase 3, re-implementing guidelines like the mask mandate for at least a temporary period of time. This will probably greatly reduce the spread of the virus and schools with mask mandates are 3.5 times less likely to have a COVID outbreak, so we'd be preventing all of these new COVID cases. It's a simple precaution that we can take to prevent the spread without hindering learning in schools. And if we don't take measures to prevent the spread of COVID-19, we may put ourselves in an even worse situation than we are, than we are in right now as these numbers continue to rise. I feel that the school must do something to combat the virus and keep the children of Brookings School District safe.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comment time. Next up is an administrative update on COVID-19 items.
Well, good evening, board members, members of our community present, community members watching and observing. Appreciate having the opportunity to share. I know that at our last board meeting, I was unable to be here present because I had my bout with COVID as well. And for those that had questioned about coughing during the board meeting, I was at a distance, I was on a phone, and certainly wearing a mask tonight as a precautionary measure to serve as a, as a recognition of the phase that we're in, which is mask strongly recommended. This evening, I'm going to share a presentation, and maybe we should hit the, the couple of lights back in the corner, Paul, if you could do that, so that you can better see the presentation of what I'm going to share. And the presentation is to address or answer a question or a couple of questions that came up at the last school board meeting when we made the decision to move from Phase 1 to Phase 2. And this is to highlight or share some data, what's going on. And our base of looking at this information takes us back to January 3rd. That's when we came back, our first day after, after Christmas break. And it gives us some perspective of what's happened over the last couple of weeks in the Brookings School District relative to COVID-19, in particular, the Omicron variant, as we look at what's happening. And so certainly feel free to stop me, board members, anytime during the presentation. We do afford an opportunity at the end for questions that you may have. But really, the lead question that was asked is, what has been the impact of illness, in a broad sense, on student and staff attendance, and certainly drilling a little deeper into what specifically has been the impact of COVID? Not only COVID positive, but also COVID quarantine. And this presentation is an attempt to answer that. And before I go too much further, I need to give credit where credit is due. This certainly was a group effort of our entire administrative team. I have to say a great deal of appreciation for both Shannon Smith as well as Heather Astmussen, they helped with a lot of the graphic work that you're going to see this evening. And then certainly all the administrators weighed in and have had a chance to review this presentation. Board members and community members, you have not seen this, it was not uploaded until very late this afternoon, and that was a direct result of us attempting to have the latest information, which is today, as part of the information that we're sharing. We'll certainly make this available widely so everybody has an opportunity to review the information and the data and ask questions that may obviously follow. So again, back to the question at hand, what has been the impact of illness on students and staff attendance in the Brookings School District? So I think it's very important to understand the process first. What did we do? Well, we started looking at student data on attendance dating back to January 3rd and likewise looking at staff data on attendance back to that same date and time, coming off of our holiday break, when we first started to really learn a great deal about the impact of the Omicron variant and what's going on across the country, across the state, and across the region. And we tried to break this down into some different components, and you'll see this referenced in the graphs that you'll see a little bit later on here. Overall absences, COVID-19 positive, or you'll see it referenced as COVID P or COVID Q, which is the quarantine impact. And then other illnesses, and that's a very broad used term because we know that we're dealing with some other seasonal illnesses right now, flu, sore throat, strep. We've heard these things from our, from our healthcare providers, you read about it in the news as well. So first of all, we'll start with our student data. And this is our student attendance data and gives us some perspective. And first of all, you'll, you'll see that, just kind of giving you a format of the slides that you're going to see, you'll see Hillcrest students first, you'll see the enrollment at the top. Quick explanation on the, on the X and Y axis. The X-axis obviously is the date, the Y-axis will vary from building to building. And the reason I wanted to point that to you, it's directly tied back to the enrollment numbers that you see, so it gives you some perspective. We had looked at utilizing a standard perspective on the, on the Y-axis as we presented this data this evening, but then that gave a misinformed, or could have been a skewed one way or another reference of the data that you're going to see because we know that there's a vast difference between a Hillcrest Elementary with 279 students and Brookings High School with 990 students. So with that being said, I wanted to give you that format. So let's take a look at what our data says here, and what, this is what we have. This is what we've noticed over time, that, that the blue line indicates the number of students, and you can see around the 13th, we hit a, a high point in Hillcrest Elementary of total student absences. And you can see slightly before that, our impact of COVID positive and COVID quarantine had hit a little bit of a peak as well. Let's keep looking at some of the other schools as well, as we look at what's going on, has gone on, and what, what is certainly going on today. So the next one is Madera Elementary School. And as we look at the information from Madera, you see some similar type of data where you see a little uptick, 11th, 12th, right in there, and then where we are today relatively speaking. Dakota Prairie Elementary School with 431 students, again, around the 11th, 12th, a slight peak, uptick if you will, and then where we are today with, with those numbers. And then Camelot with 522 learners. You'll notice the tight bands of, of the three components, overall illness, COVID quarantine, and COVID positive. Mickelson Middle School with 803 learners. Similar pattern, a little bit earlier, as you can see, with the COVID quarantine between the 9th and the 11th, on the 10th there hitting a higher point, and then some illness certainly having a greater impact as you look at overall illnesses, some other illnesses beyond COVID in the factors. And then the high school. Again, some very similar trends of what's going on with the peak around the 11th, 12th, right in there, and then the trend down since that point in time over these last few days. So what does this look like in aggregate for the entire district? This is, this is the, if we would pull all that data together into one graphic representation. You can see that total student absences are pretty high. I mean, when you look at our total student absences, and we have to be mindful that those extend beyond simply illness or COVID impact. That may be a family trip, it may be some other function that's going on, but those are things that, that are beyond really the scope of what we're tracking when we look at the other three factors, overall illness, COVID quarantine, and COVID positive. And as you can see from the graphic representation, those numbers have trended down over the last several days, based upon the data that we have. So let's make this really transparent and real, something that, that highlights what's going on. When we look at the information that we have here, you'll notice this was the date that was referenced consistently in the data that was presented, January 11th. We had total students, 754, that were absent. Of those, 181 were COVID positive. There were 272 on COVID quarantine, and other illnesses accounted for, 234 students. So that's, again, the flu, strep throat, some of those seasonal illnesses that we've heard about. If you look at today, for our most recent information, 191 students absent, and that does take into account if there were activities going on as well, but of those, 35 COVID positive, 67 COVID quarantine, and 53 out for some other type of illness. So let's take a look at what this really means. What is, what does this mean as we start trying to put a little meaning, because data is just that, data is to inform meaning and to discern some meaning and understand what's going on. It appears that we had a peak on or about January 11th, again, based on our current information and data. You can see that the, the information has suggested that we're trending down. When you look at 754 absences on January 11th compared to 191 today, that's certainly a positive, in my eyes, indicator of, of where we're at. So let's take a look at our staff information and what's happening with our staff data. And we'll start out and utilize a similar approach. I'm gonna begin by sharing the slides, the Y-axis, X-axis. You'll see some similarities in these axis definitions because we did not break it down by the number of staff members at Hillcrest relative to the number of staff members at the high school. We use this consistent application. As you look at the axis numbers, it will give you an indication nonetheless of what's transitioned and transpired over the last couple of days as we've looked at this and considered. So again, I think it's important to recognize that it's gradients of 5, 10, 15, 20, 25 for those that may be viewing at home. And it is, again, the four colors that we've utilized before, total staff absences, the COVID P or COVP is COVID positive, COVQ is COVID quarantine, and then the ill, ILL, the green line represents illness beyond those things, beyond those other measures. You can see that, again, we, we recognize that around the 13th, 14th, 15th, we had an impact on illness here, getting between five and 10 staff members that were out on, on some of those given days, and, and I think much of that, as you can see, can be attributed to two factors, COVID positive and then seasonal illnesses or other illnesses. And I think it's important to recognize, because I know this is a comment or a question that I've been asked, is the illness factor of family COVID impact, where we may have a staff member staying home to attend to a spouse or a child or somebody else that may have an illness. So we, we do account for those, family-related illnesses under illness, that's not checked necessarily as a COVID positive, maybe a COVID quarantine. Looking at the Madera staff, you'll notice again that we had a little dip around the 12th, but then back up around the 13th. And again, the COVID impact, slight uptick, but it's only a couple of staff members, illness down, and our COVID quarantines have been relatively flat as well in Madera. We look at Dakota Prairie. You can see that we, we did not have the, the dates, today's numbers on this slide, we just didn't have a chance to get those put in. They may have been added late, but prior to the, the final publishing of this, but you can see where our numbers sit as well with Dakota Prairie with the impact of COVID positive, COVID quarantine, and certainly illness, other illnesses, which like, like I said, may impact other family members as well, but certainly a, a factor. Look at the Camelot staff. Then we'll move on to the middle school staff. You can see we have some higher You can see we have some higher numbers here at the middle school, but certainly higher numbers because we're getting to a larger staff as well. And then finally, the high school staff. Relatively limited impact on COVID quarantine, greater numbers with other staff absences. That's the blue line, which may be accounted for with different activities, those types of things. But then again, the two lines of probably the most relevance for our conversation this evening, the green, other illness, as well as the COVP. So then taking a look at this in aggregate overall, we did utilize an axis of 500. That is an approximation of the number of total staff that the district has, factoring in, obviously, with some variables, with subs and those types of things. But it does give you a sense, relative to our end size of our overall district staff population, what has transpired since January 3rd. You can see that those numbers have maintained a relatively flat line as we walk across. So some more information relative to that. So first of all, you can see there appears to have been the greatest impact, and I say appears because there's a little nuance there. If you look closely at both the 13th and the 14th, you can see total absences on the 14th were 82, on the 13th, 81, COVID positive. Those flipped 22 and 21, a little higher, and COVID quarantine. But again, there were some other factors. So overall, I pointed out the 14th as our highest illness or absence date. And then you compare that to today. We know that this number, I believe, does have the Dakota Prairie numbers in with the 44 in aggregate, but you can see the all-staff absences, 44, seven COVID positive, zero on COVID quarantine today, and other illnesses, 11. Thought we'd put a little more context into this as well by taking a look at the average number of staff absences for the 12 days of December that we were in session. Thought that gave a little frame or context. So school was in session for 12 school days during December. We had some snow impacts in there. On average, on an average day, we had 54 and 1/4 staff members absent from school. Again, for a variety of reasons. It may have been attending to a spouse. It may have been attending to a student activity. It could be any number of reasons. And then we looked at what that looked like in September. So just after school had started, when we were still in Phase 1 at that point in time, what was the average number of staff absences in September of 2021? You can see we're at 52.6. So again, those are just some points of reference or some additional points of reference relative to what we're talking about when we have the staff absences. So you can see when we start getting to those numbers that are referenced on January 13th or 14th, where we're hitting 81 or 82 staff absences, is that taxing our system? Absolutely, without a question. Because we know that we have limitations on the number of subs that we have in our buildings. That is certainly a factor and certainly a consideration. But I think we all entered this year understanding one thing, and that is our students are best when they're served face-to-face in instruction, and that's why we didn't offer an alternative relative to remote learning this year. And I think that has started to meet itself out on some national levels as we start to hear the impact of students being isolated and the mental health impacts and the residual impacts of those things. So I'm not going to apologize for any of the decisions that we've made thus far. We are certainly in a time that's unusual and unique and something that is unique for all of us. There is no playbook on how to navigate a pandemic, and we are doing the very best we can. I think all of this gives us some context, though, of what we're struggling with when we talk about some of the staffing struggles. Whenever we've hit close to 50 subs necessary in a given day, that's a challenge for us. It simply is. And you can see we have been at or above that threshold ever since January 3rd, but I would say very consistently throughout the year. It is just a real challenge this year finding and retaining subs. So what does this mean? Well, we'll dive a little bit more into it. Again, just some narrative to what I've already said, that we know that COVID quarantine and COVID direct impacts are pretty significant. 22 absences were a result of COVID positive. When you look back to January 13th, eight were COVID quarantine. That does not account for, again, the other illnesses where a teacher may be staying home to tend to a spouse that may be ill or tend to children that are ill. And you can see that our illnesses are down significantly, which is a positive trend, going the right direction for us. What are some other general observations? Again, our trend line is going down. We know that the absences are going down as well from just one week ago today, which is positive for us. We also know that we have made efforts to communicate, increased personal care. We've asked parents to keep sick children at home. We've communicated that masks are strongly recommended. During my Monday memo, I even went so far as to describe the appropriate way to cough because we want people to be safe in what they're doing and their interactions. We have struggled to find subs, and I know board members, that may be something that you hear around coffee or across the community because we know we are a tight-knit community, and we continue to struggle to find subs. That is not uniquely a Brookings problem. I could show you right now on a Facebook post from the Sioux Falls school system how they have increased their substitute paid at nearly $31,000 a year for long-term subs because they are so desperate for substitute teachers. I could show you another Facebook post where a bank has started to offer incentives for their staff members to sign up to become subs. Not that I'm suggesting anything for First Bank or Trust, but certainly this is not a unique problem to Brookings. I had asked in my meeting this last week with the BEA, Brookings Education Association leadership, if they could give us some insights or input relative to where the staff would be from the membership of the Brookings Education Association. They did a quick survey. Certainly, this does not represent all district staff, nor does it represent all BEA members. But you can see that it is very mixed in terms of the response, ranging from some representation of the blue, which suggests Phase 1 at 11.7%, to Phase 4, which is a small factor. I didn't add that up to come up with the total. But you can even see the difference between Phase 2 or Phase 2 with a mask requirement or an intermediary step. Not much unanimous decision there between those two factors. And certainly Phase 3, while it's the strongest, is one phase. You could argue that Phase 2 is the strongest because it represents a greater population. But again, just some additional perspective or insight, board members, as we talk about this further this evening. So what does this mean in terms of the recommendation? As you know, in the board packet this evening, the district administration continues to recommend that we remain in Phase 2 of the Bobcat Tracks Plan. We do acknowledge that a mask mandate could remain and does remain an option. However, we consider the current trend suggesting that a mask requirement isn't necessary at this time. What other considerations are noteworthy? Certainly, there was a comment made earlier about masks. We continue to strongly encourage those, and we do have masks available, and we can certainly seek out more. They are the medical-type masks. They are not the N95s, which we know in some recent information, there's been more talk that those are probably the best masking alternative. So again, we do have the masks available that we have been able to secure, working with our PPE supplier. Additionally, we have well over 1,000 test kits available in the district right now today. And in each of those two test kits, there's two individual tests. We are ready to hand those out to any of our students and our staff so that they can test accordingly. I know there have been questions about individuals being tested and to what extent they're being tested, asking if individuals are coming to school untested. Again, that is falling squarely back on the individual because we have tests available, and we have consistently and continually emphasized the importance of staying home if you are sick. And that's not a new message. That's a message that we share every single year. When we look at the specific issue that we're dealing with, the CDC does suggest that the Omicron will continue to spread and spread rapidly. There's a direct link from the CDC suggesting as much. And again, it's something that I think is relevant in the context of what we're talking about. Our children interact with each other beyond the school walls. They're going to get together in gymnastics class. They're going to get together in taekwondo. They're going to continue to congregate beyond our school walls. And we know with the spread that Omicron is presenting, that while the school district can address many of the challenges of our world, we can't solve all of them. And I find it a little disheartening, the amount of expectation being placed upon a school district right now to somehow bend the curve of what is being declared a public health crisis. It's a pandemic. So I offer that just as a point of reference in the conversation, that I don't think our club hockey, our gymnastics organizations are going to require masks, nor do I think they're going to shut down their programs. And for us to think that simply implementing a mask mandate is going to somehow bend that or change that with those organizations, I don't know that it will. I think we also have to understand that this point has brought up a great deal of discussion in our district, the district dashboard. We started implementing the dashboard at the onset of the pandemic with the intent to be transparent in our communications. But we know that things have changed, and predominantly, the change has been the impact of at-home testing. We don't have everybody report at-home testing to us. We have only ever dashboarded the information that we get from the South Dakota Department of Health and/or the South Dakota Department of Education. This is becoming a point of contention in the district and certainly something that has taken and continues to take a considerable amount of time of our staff. And given that it is something that is declaratively by myself saying is not an accurate representation, I am going to remove the dashboard beginning February 4th. That will be the last day that we will dashboard. And finally, we are hearing that 95% of new COVID infections are the Omicron. And I put that reference on there, taking us directly back to point number two, which suggests that this is going to continue to spread and spread rapidly. So with all of that being said, board members, you've heard the recommendation. It is not a recommendation that I make lightly. It's one that I take very seriously. So you know the threshold of what was put on the table as our full administrative team talked about the recommendation this evening, as well as what we talked about prior when we moved to Phase 2. Our team had discussed even going so far as to shutting down school for four days this week and not having any interaction with students or staff, completely shutting everything down as a response to what we were seeing with those numbers. When we looked back and evaluated why we started the school year in person and what we saw as value in the relationship that is created in the school environment, our team opted to come back with the recommendation then, as well as today, of remaining in Phase 2 because we understood the value of having kids in face-to-face instruction. Equally, we want to advocate for the well-being and safety, and that's why we continue to strongly urge the wearing of masks. But equally, we understand that that is going to require us, frankly, to kick some kids out of school because we know some families are not going to adhere to a mask mandate. They have said as much. And we would be putting our administrators in a position to start removing students from school during the time when a mask mandate is in place, whether it's two weeks, whether it's two months. And that frankly is something that did not sit well with the full administrative team. So that's why, again, we come back to making the recommendation that we do this evening, albeit not popular with everybody. It's the recommendation that I'm prepared to advance on behalf of the full administrative team this evening. So I do stand ready for any questions, board members, that you may have.
Questions for Dr. Willard?
I will say, Dr. Willard, I came from Edgerton, Minnesota today. I was there to judge at an FCCLA event, and they did shut down school there for four days, primarily because they had no substitute teachers. And they had increased the number of illnesses. Then I drove through Pipestone on my home and stopped. There's the Pipestone newspaper. They have also shut downed school and are doing remote learning. And both of those things are concerning, but I think face-to-face learning is still the best opportunity for our kids, anything we can do to keep kids in the school. And I also think that we have a better idea of who kids are interacting with when the majority of their day is spent at school. So I feel sometimes like this is a no-win situation. I really do. You know, we hear different kinds of information. I hear that, you know, any mask is better than no mask. And yet, as you said, we can't force people to wear a mask if they're not going to do it. I'm very concerned about the number of subs we have. Because I don't, I know a substitute teacher is doing the best they can. They can't, they don't replace that classroom teacher. And as Mr. Lanning said, it's keeping up, that teacher not only has to prepare for the sub, but they have to keep up with all those students that are absent, too. So that is concerning to me. Probably most alarming of all of the things that we've seen tonight is that, for me, that is really concerning. That being said, I don't have an answer. I mean, I don't think any of us do. I think we're all trying to do the best we can. I do want to go on record as, for the public and anyone that's listening, everyone on this board is concerned about the safety and the health and the well-being of our kids. There is not one of us that is not had that at the top of our priority list all year long. But as we look at all of this information, it really puts us in a struggle because we're conflicting information, there's new information all the time. And I just want people to know that we are doing the best we can. We are not being divisive in any way, shape, or form. I agree with what you said earlier, that we aren't getting much support from the community in terms of how they're viewing this and how they are implementing strategies, which also puts us at a disadvantage. So I just wanted to make those remarks before we go on with this topic.
Thanks, Deb. I just, I think you hit on a number of really important things, and I would go back and double down on what you shared about the cost of having a substitute. And I'm not talking the financial cost. I'm talking the impact educationally. There is nobody that replaces a highly qualified, highly effective teacher in a classroom. And even if it's a well-trained teacher that may have retired or a well-trained teacher that's brand-new into the system, they still don't replace that relationship and that magic that occurs within the schoolroom, within the schoolhouse on any given day between our educators and our learners. And so I equally share that concern and echo the same things that you would about our commitment to safety and well-being. I don't think that there's a single administrator that does not go to bed thinking about or wake up thinking about the impact of COVID-19 on our school every single day.
So the, couple of questions, just not to get too granular here, Clint, but number Did we not have school on the 14th, Friday the 14th?
I don't know. It may have been.
All right. But what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to get to the point of saying, you know, 119, 120, 400, 190, 400, 191, if I read the chart that you gave us. And the same thing, we had for the first time in a long time, teachers at 44. My, do I have that right? right, or not? Oh, okay.
Yeah. We still track on those days. We still, we still get reports on COVID impact from the State Department of Education.
Put some color on why these numbers are dropping so drastically, just day over day. I'm not saying it's a trend, because I don't believe a trend is developed by one day.
Right.
Why are those numbers so odd?
Well, again, I'm going to give you my perspective, and my perspective alone, which isn't a medically trained perspective. But I think it goes back to some of the things that we've heard about the Omicron variant, that the impact is very quick, and equally, the return is not as extensive, or the impact isn't as extensive. So we know that that's a factor. We also know that the changes in some of our practices with the COVID quarantine impact has had some impact on return as well. Those are just a couple of speculations that I have. I don't have anything more than that to share, other than a speculative answer, not a definitive answer. I apologize.
It just seems sometimes like this thing is confusing. I'm on a hospital board. They're preparing us for a tsunami in the next 30 or less days. And then all of a sudden, we look at numbers on 120, and they, I'm not saying that's a trend, but I'm just saying it just causes you to sort of pause and say, how does that tie out?
And that's why we're going to continue to track this over the next couple of weeks, because we know that, we've heard the same thing, that, and I think much of that is driven by some of the data that's coming out from the CDC and then pressed through from many of the major news outlets and networks. And I think the details that we find in our data will be our best indicator. Unfortunately, it's all autopsy information. It's not information that is going to lead us to a decision unless we start seeing a real sharp spike in a couple of days where I'm on the phone with our board leadership suggesting that somehow we need to have an emergency meeting, because all of a sudden, the curb is just super steep and happening very urgently. But right now, again, I would agree with you that we need some additional data to say it's a trend or not. But the indicators are suggesting that we're going the right direction. Now, whether that's sustainable or not, I don't know. And I know that, I received a communication today, maybe many of you did as well, board members, that referenced the recent presentation by our hospital administrator, Jason Merkley, and the impact that it's having on the Brookings cell system. So again, I take all of that very seriously. I have a tremendous amount of respect, both personally and professionally, for Jason Merkley and what he represents. And I'm in regular communication with our healthcare professionals to gather their input and perspective of what's happening. So I think the jury's out. I think the jury's out, but we have to go by what we know today and what we know and understand at this point in time. But I wish we all could have a better understanding of what the future holds relative to this, so we could make more timely decisions than what we're at right now.
I am on the same page with Deb, in a lot of those points that you made, as far as, you know, we have a two-week window that we, two to four weeks, depending on who you're talking to, where this thing is going to go up rapidly and then decline rapidly. And as we look through those numbers, I'm so glad that we have the metrics to fall back on. I think they'll continue to tell us the story as this progresses, and we'll continue to do our very best to manage it as things change. I have heard from a handful or more of people that the school district is indifferent or not acting. And I want to copy Deb's sentiments as far as, especially during these peaks, which have felt like so many now, a brief reprieve in the middle of the different variants. But I can't say that there is much else that we're focusing on. I'm not sure how to make more transparent the number of calls that we have, the number of times we touch base. We, it's important to me to be in sync with the administrators. It's important to me to understand what's going on in the school buildings, because I'm not in them. And I think it's really critical that we are united in how we're going to approach this. And so I want to put my support behind the administrative team. At the same time, I'm also hearing from the medical side of things, that the number-one type of mask that could have any impact on this would be N95 masks. Anything we do that will cause additional efforts and work for our staff and our students, I want it to be impactful, and I want it to be helpful. One complicating factor is that we are just talking about one part of their day. And, you know, when I hear from our community members that there are large-scale COVID parties happening outside of school, you know, we just, we can't affect or impact any of that. We can't impact anything except for between 8:00 and 3:22, or essentially. So I just wanted to add that in as well. And I would, you know, take ownership of maybe not bringing forward how many meetings and conversations we are having about the topic. But it is always in the front of our minds, and we're always talking about what we need to do and when we need to do it, and monitoring the numbers and seeing where we're at, because there isn't one person on here that wants our staff, our students, to be sick.
Dr. Willard, I understand the reasoning behind taking down the COVID dashboard. But will this type of data, which you just shared with us this evening, will that continue to be tracked to some extent? For example, you know, in particular, the total number of absences due to illness. When I'm calculating, you know, some of this is getting to be a pretty high percentage of people that are absent from school. And that's, you know, when you take 50 at Hillcrest at a 379, that's getting up there in terms of percentage-wise. So I think we still need to continue to know how many people are absent from our schools and what we can do there. I also want to, you know, for you to continue to urge people, masks are strongly recommended still at this point in time. And if your kids are sick, please keep them home. If you are sick, please stay home, because that is a huge contributor to the continuation of these illnesses. And the other factor is, if you're not getting tested, you don't know that it's COVID, you should be staying home for a longer period of time. And I, well, you hate to see those absences. I don't, I do know of cases where someone is immunocompromised. As Mr. McCain mentioned earlier, that's the person that we may not see at school. It might be someone at their home, or it might be a sibling. We have to be concerned about those people, too. So are we going to keep track of that data?
Yes. That's the intent, that we would continue with this type of information, and at our next board meeting, be able to share an update of what our charts and graphs are showing us, what our data is continuing to tell us. And I would just, again, emphasize some of the same points that you did about keeping children home if they're sick, keeping yourself home if you're sick. We aren't encouraging any staff member, if they're ill, to come to work. We're asking quite the opposite, that if you even suspect that you have something, take home a test, complete the test, and take home a couple of them, because we want you to test before you come back again as well. I mean, we have done our due diligence to emphasize the point of the suggestion of indifference. We wouldn't have over 1,000 testing kits sitting in our office right now if we were indifferent. I think that point, it's how serious we're taking it. The stockpile of PPE equipment that we have, that shows our emphasis. We, through our Essar funds, we increase nursing hours. I think that was a commitment on behalf of this board to address what's going on. We took action to support students that were out by putting in place the success interventionists to assist with some of the issues that were pointed out or brought up earlier tonight. So the word indifference isn't an appropriate one. I think we're being as responsive as we can, and in order for us to continue to do so, we're going to continue to track this type of information and present it. I just know that the dashboard worked prior to the at-home tests, because we were getting the information. It was one data source, one data point, and we were able to communicate that very clearly. But now with the onset, like I said, of the at-home tests, and knowing that the federal government's providing those now too, we don't get calls from parents necessarily telling us that they are, they aren't positive, or that they have or they haven't tested. And equally, we know that we have some that could call up and say, we've took an at-home test. We're not asking for any evidence or data that demonstrates that they have completed a test and that the test is positive. So there's so many variables here in how we can respond. It's not simply just, well, take a picture of your COVID test and send it to us. Well, that wouldn't do anything for us. So we want to get back to being a fact-based approach, and the best way to do that is eliminate things that don't provide us that opportunity, and the dashboard's one of them. But this information will continue to be gathered and shared.
And then one thing that we have not said, that I am going to say, and I know it's controversial, but vaccinations are still one of the mitigation efforts that people should be considering. And I know people, some people have personal reasons for why they're not getting vaccinated. But that's also an effort that we need to make people aware of.
Yes. And I will share that we have shared information out, and maybe it's time to do it again, on where people can obtain vaccinations in the community of Brookings, because we have had that communication with our healthcare providers, with different pharmacy agencies, again, to communicate where and how people can complete the vaccination protocol, again, if they choose. So again, we can redouble our effort there to build awareness and make people aware of the different things that we have done and continue to do, because this is a community thing. It's not a school district issue. It's not a city issue. It's not just a state issue. It's a national and international issue. And we are doing all that we can, in my eyes at least right now, to address what situation we have before us. But we'll keep track of what's going on.
Oh, go ahead, Van.
I'm sorry. Melissa, go ahead.
I just had two questions. One, how do families request a test from the school district?
Yeah, it's a great question. There's a couple of ways that we have accommodated those, predominantly through the school nurses, but also through the school secretary and the secretarial office. They can, if they are seeking a test. We are making those available in the buildings, and then they can pick them up. And again, we're very thankful that we have the stockpile that we do, because those tests are great tools to track both if you have the onset, as well as when you're getting to the end, to verify that you have completed COVID, if indeed you've had it. And I think that's really important, that you take the opportunity to test both. And just to really emphasize the importance of testing, again, I think there's a lot of illness going on right now, and that's pretty standard for this time of year. We know flu tends to increase. We know that strep tends to increase. We know that there are serious head colds and those types of things going around as well. If you have a suspicion that any of that illness is related to COVID, take the test. And I say that from personal experience as much as anything, because what I thought was a pretty serious head cold ended up actually being a COVID-positive test for me personally. And I'm not afraid to say that on an open mic. It's just the nature of the virus that we're dealing with. It impacts people very differently, from serious respiratory issues that require ventilation in a hospital bed to maybe what you might characterize as a minor sniffle. So taking those tests and accessing the resources that are available through the school district are certainly important steps that you can take to protect yourself as well as our community. So contact the school, contact the nurse, and if that fails, contact the district office, because we'll certainly work to get the information or the test in your hands.
The other question I had was, because this thing is changing so rapidly, and we're seeing those fluctuations, understanding the dashboard going away because it isn't accurate and couldn't have been as soon as we had home tests. Because we do have this data, we are tracking this data, I am wondering if at least a summary in the Monday memo would be helpful, because then at least we're going from what used to be full transparency of information to at least a weekly update of how the district is doing. I think the families would appreciate that. I don't know how much, there's probably a large push that goes into this, but it might be easier to have a weekly update than nothing.
That's a great suggestion. I made note of that, because I think there's an opportunity just to, again, keep people informed, keep people apprised of what we're doing and the information that we're tracking, so that people know and understand that we are keeping our finger on this pulse. That's a great suggestion.
That was a great idea. That was what I was going to suggest, too. So, I want to understand this, Clint. The thing that you're pulling down is not the staff and student count that's up on the screen now. Is that correct?
That's correct, because the...
Because I think, what I, I don't care what the board does, I do care what the board does. But I mean, whatever happens tonight, we have got to have a scorecard. And we can't jack around with the numbers. We got to do the best we can. And if you change any of those numbers on those first 12 days, or whatever it is, you know, then you'll have to provide an overlay, show it where it was and where it is, and so on and so forth. And so that they, you know, the next time we meet, whether it's an emergency meeting because something has happened, or whether it's in a week or two, you know, all we'll see is another four or five, 10 or 12 or 15 days. And I just cannot emphasize enough how important it is to be consistent in the way that data is collected and presented, because then we don't have any issues, or we may have issues with transparency in the eyes of some people, but at least we'll have a defensible or a defendable protocol that we can show.
And I would utilize that point to reemphasize our commitment to continuous improvement as the school district goes, because so much of that is grounded in not just the data that you collect, but then how it's reported, and then ultimately what you do about it. And by that time, arguably, we would have truly established some trends, because then we have several more data points, so a broader span of time. We'll also have some more insight on what has been the real impact within the healthcare system. I know that there is certainly the numbers that we're hearing now. We're also hearing kind of this anticipation of what is to come. So certainly, we'll have all of that to lend some additional perspective and insight on. And the opportunity to continue to gather this data in a way that we can share, both for students as well as staff, I think give you as a board some real context for whatever decision might be necessitated on, if it's a shift in phase, or if it's an intermediary mask requirement that we land on, and if we do so, making certain we have the right PPE, the N95 mask, for example, because we are hearing that that is the most reliable defense as far as a masking option goes. So certainly, those all become factors when you consider how the board would act relative to the data that we have. So very well-made point.
And Dr. Willard, did you share that you're going to put this available, make this available, the presentation that you shared tonight?
We can do this. Actually, one of the thoughts that I had, and I'm at the risk of thinking out loud, is that I would work with my trusty assistant, Jason, to maybe put together an abbreviated version of this that could be shared via YouTube, via our channel, so that it's accessible. Certainly, this is out there tonight in the space, and maybe even from this. Certainly, this is out there tonight in the space and maybe even from this presentation, Jason can work with us to share, condense it, put it into YouTube and push it out to the entire community because that's what we've done with other things like this in the past.
And I would encourage you also to put that link for the government tests where you can go to get the free tests. I did it, didn't take, all you have to give is your name and address. That's it. And I know it's going to take a couple of weeks before you get it, but you get four kits. That's quite a few. So, I might want to also put that link.
My question had been asked by Melissa relative to the testing, where they can get it. But what if, you know, we aren't in school every day and if a parent on Saturday morning decides they want a test, what are the options in the community?
I don't have an answer for that, Wes. That's a good question to ask. What I might do is, given that, is, is reach out to our healthcare providers to see what options are available because then we can make our, our community aware of that. That's a great point because I know we'll have those situations occur where a child may get up early in the morning on a Saturday morning before going to a gymnastics competition and they're a little sniffly and, well, run a quick test and see if, if there's actually a case there and, and not have access to resources. So, that's a, that's a great question to ask. I'll find out.
Thank you.
Anything else for Dr. Willard?
I'll just close by saying thanks, board members, for the opportunity to share this I can't emphasize enough how serious we are taking this and continue to do so. We know that this is absolutely unprecedented and, and nowhere is there a playbook or a guideline on how you should navigate a pandemic. And we know the responses from school district to school district in South Dakota are different, but even from state to state and across the country. We still hear stories today about schools that are not in session. And I just, I really have deep and grave concerns for a couple of things. First of all, for our children that are in those situations and equally, I have deep and grave concerns for our teaching faculty and staff because this is taking a tremendous toll. I completely support what Mr. Lanning said earlier this evening on the impact that it's having of preparing for students that are, are there, let alone preparing for students that may not. Our, our staff are, are tired and that weighs very heavily on me and I know I speak from behalf of all five of you. I know Kelly's listening on the phone and I know I speak on behalf of all five of you when I say that, that we are well-aware and, and continue to talk about opportunities to help provide some support. And I, I want to share that one of the things that in the district office we are talking about right now, despite the fact that we don't have COVID leave available, if there's a way that we can create some sort of opportunity internally to make that happen, and that's something that I'm working on right now with our district office staff to come forward with a plan to execute on. I don't believe it would take board approval to do that, but I just want you as board members to be aware and our staff equally to be aware that we are committed to doing what we can, again, to support and serve our staff and our community. So, thanks for the opportunity to present this evening.
Next up is the facility project discussion. I will hand this over to the facilities committee.
And as, as you do, I'm going to point that Steve Jastrom is here this evening as well to shed some light on some of our discussions. So, and Kelly is on the phone, so she certainly can be available and answer questions, but I know Wes has been a big part of the discussion about our facilities work. So, I'll turn it over to Wes and to Kelly and Brian and I can certainly weigh in. I welcome Steve as well to, to share his perspectives and insights.
Well, first of all, I'd say that we're on schedule relative to our plan where we thought we needed to be 90 days ago, which is really important as we move forward. And, and then that we've looked at Milk, Madera and Hillcrest, not the, not in the same way, maybe similar functions and, and services and design, but not the same. And that's as important as we did involve the principals and their input relative to the uniqueness of their, of their programs or their sites, if it would be a better way of saying it. And the, we will be adopting a resolution tonight that would put, put the money behind our facility plan. So, that's, that's the action that we're, we're looking at. So, the project is still on target relative to the financial numbers we gave, the cost statements that we gave last September. I think Steve presented it, or October meeting, whatever it was, anyway, it was early on. We aren't, we haven't deviated from that. We've taken some things out. We've affirmed some things that are important. The affirmation includes that we would have a five-section school at Hillcrest, at Madera, rather, five-section school at Madera and a four-section school in Hillcrest with the provision that the design of those schools will allow for additional section at, at some future point if we, successor boards decide that they need to have a, an extra section space for classes. And I think it's important that we, in fact, the first note that is on our, on our agenda is that we are repurposing 14,000 square feet in Madera for the project. This is a newer, newer part of the facility, meets the CTA standards in terms of the envelope of the building, insulation, and it actually is, fits quite nicely into the function that we're looking at and that is the food service function and circulation space for our, for breakfast and noon meal. And then we're, includes early childhood education, the gym that matches what we have at Dakota Prairie at this, in this facility, which is important. Two music rooms, there are one, there's one music room here in this facility at Dakota Prairie. From experience, we've, and input from our principals, we're looking at two music rooms. We are looking at a prep kitchen in Madera and a, just a servary kitchen in Hillcrest. And then we're trying to use the space as best we can, orientation, to keep in mind drop-off, pickup, buses and the security issues as we look at the site plan of the building, which is, has to, there's a lot of work to do by the architect to get that in final form, but we, I think we've got a, a, we could safely say that the space that's there allows us to continue with construction and not take down the building, existing buildings. And that adds, gives us one year earlier than, than we would otherwise be before we can occupy this, this building. So, there might be some other things that Kelly thinks of or has in her notes or Dr. Willard.
Can you hear me okay, everybody?
Yep.
All I would add is just that the committee collaboratively prepared the report that you should have, so can refer to that and show some overall highlights of the project with input from the principals as well.
Number one, maybe for you too, Steve. The, the site, I hate to use the word search because we know where we're going to build Hillcrest, but I mean, the site plan has been now fully vetted with the city of Brookings and we know what we're going to do or what is the, the status of moving forward?
Hit your name, please.
Yep. Steve Jastrom with Architecture Incorporated. I would say we've vetted all of this information like at Hillcrest with the city hall, multiple people. We had a very good meeting there, they call it Thursday morning meetings, as I recall, where all of the department heads of the city hall have seen what's being proposed for Hillcrest. It was a very good meeting where Dr. Willard and Brian and I were, were, of course, President went through that and they were very supportive. And now, is everything, exact thing worked out? No, but we know from city hall that they are going to be very cooperative as we do. And the key thing I see that's the difference on Hillcrest is there, there's a property line between existing city-owned property and school-owned property. As we lay out the new, the new Hillcrest Elementary, we're going to do everything physically possible to keep it on existing school property. However, it's real close to city property. There's kind of a magical line in this big open green space. We'll see what lays out the best, I think, functionally for the school. And if there needs to be some adjustment with the property line, it would be a very minor adjustment, as I see it, or it would be very minor if at all. But we haven't laid out the exact footprint of the building yet.
Well, and, and I'm not part of the facilities committee, so I apologize for speaking over them, but I, my responsibility is at least halfway to the citizens of Brookings District and, and the cost. And I've always been sensitive about making sure that site preparation feature or, or piece is not any more than it needs to be. If we need 10 feet from the city, let's get it.
Yeah. And that'll be discussed with the city. They're very receptive. They said, you finish your designs and we'll go back and talk to them. They're very, their response was very helpful.
And my second question is, this is a, a very useful memo that's in the board packet, Steve and Kelly and Wes, I appreciate it. I do have some questions about the, the advisability of some of those things and I just don't think, I'm hoping that's not something that's going to get discussed tonight because we're, we're going, we're going late. We've had a deep discussion about something really important, COVID. And so, I just, I just wanted to understand whether every single bullet that's listed here is, so to speak, a done deal.
Are you referring to what, like what Wes was talking about in terms of the?
Yeah.
These were all items discussed with the facilities committee. I don't know, Wes or Kelly, if you could answer that better than I?
Well, first of all, I don't think we want to compromise on relative to the ability to add a section, and I don't think you're referring to that. Food service preparation, it can be a costly item and, and we have to evaluate led by Dr. Willard on terms of the square footage and whether or not that can fit into the $14,000 square foot and the cost of it and what resource do we use for that? And so, that's not a, not necessarily a firm decision. It's just one of those things that we can represent is included in the cost estimate. And so, whether we do that or, or not is kind of, among other things, the site plan for dropping off and picking up students, the bus plan. You know, we, we, we know at Hillcrest, it's, you know, basically on, on a third street and we need to look at what we can do there and that might affect the site of the building in terms of how, how far east we need to go and provide a good drop-off. So, I think, Van, the answer to your question is, there are lots of decisions yet to be made and we accept and welcome input by all the board members and the principals. And we will begin before the date of the bond election to have informal conversations while school is still in session with our, with our district leadership and teachers in these two schools that they have, give us, give some input because of, the, the timing is of critical importance, that we would have some idea of the input that would affect the design. Now, that isn't design work necessarily, but just collecting data. And I think when we interviewed our candidates, we were, we were stressed the fact that we need to have a, a, a good input process of our, for our facilities, what we want and what we, what we need as opposed to what might be all the wants of, of, of the district. So, I think Mr. Jastrom has, has led us in a way that we have lots of flexibility. So, thank you.
And I, again, I don't mean to speak over Kelly and, and Wes, but I, I, I think you've done a great job, Steve, and I really like this. I also am a member of a public body here, it's School Board, and I, so it's not for me to play, I've got a secret, but it's a food preparation piece at Madera that caught my eye and as long as we have opportunity to sort all that out, let's just, excuse me, logistically and so on and so forth in the future, there may be other items on the list that I haven't thought about, but I mean, that's, that's one that I'm thinking of right now, but I don't want to talk about it tonight.
Kelly?
Only other thing, yeah, thanks, Van. The only other thing I was going to add and kind of flush that out, you guys, but each of these, you know, bulleted points under each of the schools, we know the cost of each of those things, you know, and we discuss those as we added them in, took them out, tried them on for size. So, nothing is a done deal by any means. This is just our recommendation of total number. And we did have quite a bit of food service conversation. I look forward to continuing that with all of us in the future too.
And just to add a little more color on the discussion about input, what our committee, and this is for our community awareness as well as our faculty-staff awareness, the committee agreed that we would initiate that process in March and April so that we would have that process initiated well before the conclusion of the school year so staff are actively engaged. So, so that is something that we'll be planning for and preparing for in the, in the weeks to come.
It looks like there's a pretty significant difference in our estimated price tag between the last time we talked at the table, which is nice to see a significant reduction in what we would ask for with a bond. But could you at a high level just describe how we got there from the higher amount we had estimated previously to that 50, 55 amount down to closer to 33?
Sure. I'd be glad to, to address that and Kelly and Wes and Dr. Willard, you could jump in too. When we gave the original numbers, let's call it the high numbers, that was if everything was included. And for example, Hillcrest would have been a five-section school. We reduced it to a four-section school. Hillcrest was going to have a whole new prep kitchen and a servary area. It's been decided to just provide the servary, but make provisions that you can always add a prep kitchen later. We reduced some costs of the site at, at Hillcrest. The other thing we looked at or we did reduce, initially, there was going to be three music rooms. We've now decided that two music rooms would be adequate, always with the ability to add a third. And let me see, those were all the really big items that, that obviously added up quick. And frankly, one of the biggest ones is making Hillcrest just a four-section school in lieu of the five. But it's going to be designed, as Wes mentioned earlier, that you can always add on another section to Hillcrest if and when that occurs.
I think it's also very important to emphasize the, reusing once again to emphasize the importance of utilizing existing space. In the, one of the earlier presentations, that was not in consideration and as our committee met and discussed it further, we want to be very wise and prudent with the dollars that, that are being requested and reutilizing existing space helped us get to a, a better dollar amount, I would say. Something else that I think is important to reference, the, the, the number that you offered or shared, Melissa, of about 33 million does not take into effect an additional 10 million that would be captured through our existing capital outlay fund, a blend of both capital outlay certificates as well as cash within our capital outlay fund. as well as cash within our capital outlay fund. And part of that cash portion or component would also be some from our food service fund. Because our food service fund does have an excess. We had to put together a plan of action. It was a previous board action, oh gosh, probably a year ago, maybe not quite that long. And part of that action was to suggest that we would allocate as much as $150,000 from our food service fund to a school improvement project. And we've held those dollars with the intent that it could be utilized in this component, in this capacity. So I think there's multiple factors that have helped us arrive at the point where we're at today.
I think it's important to reemphasize the reuse of 14,000 square foot against 89,000. This is huge, and yet not compromise the end result. And where it's located and how the entrance of the facility will be and its availability after hours actually make for an exciting development that we found out when the architect came in with, early on, with options for space after he'd done the evaluation that was finalized in his final report of November 8th.
All right, any other questions, feedback, discussion?
A music reduction was just not really a reduction of music rooms. That was the original design cost for the K-5 school possibilities. And so, the two music rooms is good for the elementary side. So we're not, we didn't cut any music space.
Thank you, Kelly. I think it's, there's enough time in between meetings that it's probably prudent to go back over how the numbers are so different, what's included, what's not, and that was a good point, so. Anything else? Anything else for Steve, always here?
I would just say thank you for all the work that's been done so far. It's exciting to finally see this coming to fruition.
All right, thank you. As we're moving into our action items now, perhaps we will just take a quick five-minute break.
Let's use the quick and five minutes quick.
Not a slow five minutes, a quick five minutes.
A reconvene at 7:08 ish.
Continue our board meeting with item 8.1. I need a motion of approval that the Brookings School District will submit an intent to participate as a school-sponsored softball team in the spring of 2022, '23.
I saw move.
Second.
By Deb, second by Van. Any discussion?
I'll just make a real quick comment that this is something new being presented by the High School Activities Association. And as you can see in the summary, board members, that there is ample interest in moving forward within our community. We had, based upon the input from our club director, 30 high school girls who played varsity and JV levels last fall, and six of whom were seniors. So that tells you that there were 24 behind them. And then, we did have an eighth-grade team as well. So certainly ample interest in the Brookings School District in moving forward with this.
Money?
To be found.
So seriously, it's not any...
Not funded.
...lip in our P and L.
It's not going to be a significant component of it, no. We know that there will be a cost of a coach, which will have to be sorted through our negotiation process with the Teacher Association. But certainly not something that we believe is going to be substantive where it's going to impact us and our teacher salaries adversely.
Is there any idea about this, you mean, the schedule? How many games will these, they play?
I think that is still to be determined yet. And partly, some of it is still sorting out exactly when the seasons are. Some of the larger schools, not us, have advocated for a fall activity. The Brookings School District has advocated for a spring. I know many of the other schools lower in size than Brookings are advocating as well for a spring season. And that's where we see some opportunities if we all collectively have a spring season because what would prevent Brookings from playing a mill bank, for example? Not much, because women's softball is one of those, yeah, other than weather. Women's softball is one of those things that gives us that opportunity. We just know how many buses we already have on the road in the fall, and it will tax our transportation system. But again, we know that we're somewhat at the mercy of Rapid City and Sioux Falls schools.
I think it's high time we put this on.
I think we're ready for the question. Motion passes. All right, I need a motion of approval. So the way this is worded, as administration recommends remaining in Phase 2, so would this be a motion of approval to remain in Phase 2 of the Bobcat Tracks Plan?
That is the recommendation from my previous presentation.
We would need a motion in a second.
Make a motion to remain, remain in Phase 2?
Yep, that's right, of the Bobcat Tracks Plan, yep.
Of the Bobcat Tracks Plan.
Second.
Okay, motion by Kelly, second by Deb. Further discussion around it?
I'm just going to say that tonight I did come thinking that I was going to propose a two-week mask mandate. But in looking at the numbers, I don't know. We may have passed our surge, the peak that we're going to have, I don't know. I just want us to keep close tabs. And I still will point out to individuals listening that masks are strongly recommended. And yes, N95s are the best, but anything helps to reduce some of that transmission. One doctor that I heard on a national news broadcast said that, "Wear the mask that you can best tolerate for the longest period of time, and you're still going to have some kind of protection." So we are in Phase 2. Let's, I want to again reiterate, let's encourage that. And I'm going to watch those numbers closely.
Any other thoughts? All right, Brian, we're ready for the question. Motion passes. Next action item, looking for a motion of approval of resolution declaring necessity and expediency for issuance of general obligation school bonds, calling an election therefore and hiring professionals in connection therewith.
A move. Second.
A move by Van and seconded by Wes. Further discussion?
I just reiterate some of the things that we talked about in the previous meetings. There's nothing, nothing has really changed. And we're talking about 20-year bonds with a 10-year call date. There's called their power bonds with a power mount with, they're called premium bonds. And the issue date would be prior to end of August. Something in that neighborhood. I think the data we have is August 24 from our bond council underwriter. And all this is subject to approval by the voters. And on June 7th, we have some work to do to communicate the realities of this in terms of our financial impact to our patrons. But I will say that we have worked diligently for two months to look at the numbers, do the modeling that's necessary so we can present this in a force-right way to our patrons, taxpayers, and persons that we know. Some people don't necessarily vote, but they're still interested in what this is all about. And so, we want to have a broad-based communication effort and utilize resources in the district that we know will rise up to help explain this. And we will be using cash, as Dr. Willard mentioned earlier. And we're using some capital outlay which mitigates the direct tax impact of a general obligation bond. And we're trying to model it so that we use as much cash as practical relative to our cash flow situation, capital outlay certificates, that doesn't compromise some other needs that we have in the district in terms of our existing facilities, and the general obligation bonds that would be issued when the voter approves this in June.
I'd just like to particularly thank Wes for tens and tens of hours of working on this stuff. And of course, he had good help from Laura and Brian and Clint when available. And we also had a tremendous relationship with DA Davidson to help consult with us as to what to do. So as a part of the Finance Committee, I'd just like to say this has been a long time coming in terms of being vetting it, but I'm comfortable.
I think I've been the Scrooge of the group as far as the dollar amount to date for this bond. I was really uncomfortable with the previous amount we talked through. I still have some concerns as far as, you know, what that 10 million capital outlay, how that will play out long-term with some additional projects that we have slated in the district. But I am, I feel like this new amount is a great improvement. I feel like it's a responsible investment in two buildings in our district that desperately need it. So I would like to also thank you and the Construction Committee as well, Wes and Kelly, for all of your hard work in going through that to get us to a place that I think will be more palatable for our community and for the families and businesses that will be seeing that impact. So, thank you. Any other thoughts?
This did all from me. And thank you, and I think it looks like it's going to be something we can do.
I think to respond to your capital outlay, as we saw as long ago, it was three years ago with the spring, we do have headroom in our resources to maintain our buildings. And of course, if you build two new buildings, you don't have to maintain what is, we're looking at it. At Midary particularly, a huge expenditure to keep that building online if we were to go that route, but we're opting to replace it. And so, yes, we have plenty of headroom. I won't say plenty, we have figured in headroom so we can do some projects on an annual basis and not compromise it.
I'd just like to say that based on probably hundreds of bonds that Jerry has put out through DA Davidson, you know, we repeatedly asked him about, you know, "Does this give us enough wiggle room," so to speak? And he seemed comfortable with it. He, I mean, pretty much unconditionally comfortable with it. So, good question, good concern, but that's the way Jerry responded to us.
Inflation is a consideration, as we all know, talked about earlier, in terms of what's down the road, 12 months or so until bids are really brought in. We have some planning that has gone into these numbers to give us some margin, if necessary, based upon current projections and what the architect has found in similar building bids that have gone on in the last short while, so.
All right, if there is no other feedback, questions, discussion, then we are ready for the question. Motion passes. Next item is a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn. Second.
Moved by Wes, second by Van.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it.
Oh, I move, yeah.
Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.